Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the San Marcos City Council Meeting for January tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Hopefully, we don't say the date wrong. It's hard to believe that it is already is. But I'm calling the meeting to order, and if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilmember Sinella, would you like to lead us?
Thank you.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, our invocation will be by yours truly. God of peace, we invite you to preside over this meeting. Even if we have differing opinions, give us the spirit of unity. Help us to each listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to continue as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole to serve the citizens of San Marcos. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Scolik. I almost called you Mr. Phil. My apologies.
Either way, Councilmember Musgrove, here. Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Do we have any items that any council members wish to pull? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No. Okay, moving on to new business. Our first order of business. Yes. Oh, oral communications. My apologies. I don't even know how I missed that.
We have no request to speak at this time, here.
On the very first oral communications, of course. Okay, moving on to new business. We are going to be having our appointments to the city boards, committees, and commissions. And we will be starting out this evening. And one thing I would like to let everyone know. If you are not selected, we do have, at your first, during the first picks, we do have a couple of commissions where we don't have several people that have applied. We do have actually one other commission. Our Community Foundation will have an extra person or an extra opening this evening. One of our committee members did resign today, and so we will have that. And then also, if you're an alternate, we really implore you to please come to our meetings because it's really important that you get involved. We really want you to be ready and available because sometimes people don't show up at the last minute. If you're not there and you're not prepared, it really puts a wrench in things. So we really want to make sure that we really have everyone fully participating and available in the ready if we have a situation at the last minute where we need you to sit sit up on the dais because if you haven't read the agenda, it'd be pretty difficult to do that. So anyway, thank you very much for your time on that. And then also, we will be starting out. Our first commission is going to be our Budget Review Committee. And we do have three applicants for that. We have Paul Mendoza, Jim Garcia, and then Gary Grieving. So if you could please call up, come up, Paul, and tell us a couple of, or just take a couple of minutes and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to serve this evening. That'd be great.
So I applied for, I'm not sure how those were, I applied for three commissions. So do I talk three times, or do I talk once about myself?
How about just talk once about yourself?
Perfect.
If you feel, if you feel the burning desire to speak three times, well, then by all means.
Okay.
If not, you know, that'd be great. Thank you.
Perfect, thanks. Hello, my name is Paul Mendoza. I'm a business owner. I have two children that I'm raising, my wife. I've lived in San Marcos for fifteen years. I attended CSU San Marcos and Palmer College. I'm a software developer with a focus on artificial intelligence. I believe that my diverse background and skills make me uniquely qualified to serve on the Traffic Commission or Budget Review or Community Foundation. As a business owner, I understand the importance of efficient and safe transportation for the success of our community members and businesses. I also have experience managing teams and making decisions that consider the needs of multiple stakeholders. As a software developer with a focus on artificial intelligence, I have the technical expertise to understand and evaluate the use of new technologies in transportation for our city and how that impacts our budget. I am also committed to using my skills to make a positive impact in the community and to shape the future of transportation in our city and also through the Community Foundation and what they're doing there. I'm particularly excited about the potential for autonomous vehicles. The potential for them to improve our road safety and how they're going to impact the traffic on our roads. Finally, I consume a lot of books and media about city planning, finances, traffic, and transit. One of my favorite authors is Chuck Marone, who's the founder of Strong Towns, and Urban Three, which does financial modeling for cities and visualizations. In summary, my diverse background and skills make me an excellent candidate for the Traffic Commission or Budget or Community. Thank you for considering my appointment.
Thank you. Okay, next is Jim Garcia. Followed by Gary Grieving.
Hi.
Hello.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I've been a resident of San Marcos for nearly thirty years now. I have grown children and grandchildren that live here in San Marcos. I'm honored to serve the city in any capacity that I'm warranted. I've been a Planning Commissioner alternate for this past year and have been on the dais on several occasions casting my vote on projects in the planning process. My term as Planning Commissioner alternate just ended in December. I am thankful for the opportunity, knowledge gained with the future planning of our city. San Marcos is well-equipped and has a very strong planning department. I am applying for the Budget Committee to gain more knowledge and understanding of our city and its finances. I am a business owner. My business has been profitable for the past twenty-five years, has a balanced budget, and is completely debt-free, if that means anything. I would welcome the opportunity to be on the Budget Committee. If I were appointed to the Budget Committee, I would relinquish my application for the Planning Commission because at this time, my schedule is, can only accommodate one of the two committees. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Gary Grieving. Grieving. Okay, all right. Okay, so I would nominate Jim Garcia. He's in District Three. We don't have anyone on the Budget Review Committee for District Three, and can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Is that for an alternate?
Alternate, yes. My apologies. Let me, let me just specify that. So we have one alternate position available at this point in time. So that would be to fill the alternate position. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So let's go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? No. Okay. Well, we like your, we like, I like your, your balanced budget of your business and that you're in, you don't have debt. So definitely like that you have that experience. So anyway, I look forward to you serving on that. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, I actually want to take things out of order, too. I'd like to move on to Parks and Rec if the council would indulge me on that, and if you don't mind, we will move on to that. Any issues with that? Nope, okay. So we have two open regular positions. We have Letitia Robles, who is currently a member, and then also Judy Prestazini, followed by Mark Hardesty, Catherine McLean, Gary Grieving, Lionel Salisbury, which Lionel actually reached out to me earlier today, and he had a death in his family, so he cannot attend this evening, and he sent his regrets, followed by Christine Frederico. So first up is Letitia. Is she here? No. Judy Prestazini? No. Okay, followed by Mark Hardesty, Catherine McLean. Mike Hardesty? Nope. Catherine, hello?
Hello. Good evening. Mayor Jones and councilmembers. My name is Catherine McLean, and I came to San Marcos after participating in a number of the city hikes. They inspired me to buy a house here, and so that is one of the reasons that I'm very passionate about the Parks Recreation Department. I've led, I was a naturalist, volunteered for the city of Escondido for a number of years. I led hikes for elementary school children, excuse me, elementary school children, senior citizens, and and very trained athletes. Helped to patrol the trails there. Helped one incident where a biker fell off the, flew off a bike and broke his collarbone. Called the fire department to come and rescue him. I've also led a number of recreational classes at my business, which I am a biologist by nature and in my career and understand a lot about the natural resources as well as climate change, which I'll talk about, too. Which is the other committee that I've applied for is the Climate Change Committee. The, in terms of what I've done for the climate change that's relevant to that, I, I walk my talk. I, I have, we have all-electric vehicles. We have solar that supplies all of the energy that we use on an annual basis. I commute to Srenta Valley to a biotech company there, and I have been commuting by Sprinter and the Coaster for the past ten years. So, and also, I'm a gardener. And, excuse me, I'm a gardener, and I understand zero-scaping and have zero-scaped my own landscaping personally.
Great. Thank, thank you so much. Okay, our next applicant is Christine Frederico. Not here. No, Gary is not here. Okay, I would like to nominate Letitia and Judy, who are currently on there. They both have one term served, and their attendance has been good, and so I would like to just reappoint the two of them on this commission. So that would be Letitia Robles and Judy Prestazini for the two regular positions that are available. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, noes? None? Okay. Moving on to Planning Commission, we have two regular and one alternate position that's open. We have Eric Flodeen, followed by Christopher Carroll, and then it will be Ian Clark, John Laracy, Momo Sivovik, Lionel Salisbury, and then Gary Grieving. Okay, first up, Eric. I know I saw you out there. Yes, yeah.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow councilmembers. Pleasure to be here before you again this evening. I'll keep it short. I really enjoy being on the Planning Commission. I enjoy serving our community in that role. It matches perfectly with my educational and professional experience, and I'd like to respectfully request reappointment to another term. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Next up, Christopher.
Good evening, Mayor Jones, fellow members of the council. Good to see you again. I've had the pleasure of meeting all of you at some point in time. Though, Councilmembers, now I don't think we've actually met in person, but I hope to work with you in the future. I've been on the Planning Commission since 2016. I've enjoyed working with the planning team. I think there's a lot of great things going on in the city, and I would humbly request that you guys allow me to continue serving on the Planning Commission and working to keep the quality of life in San Marcos what we all want it to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Jim, I did pass you up because you had, you're already appointed. Okay, perfect. I didn't want you to think that I left you out. The next applicant is Ian Clark. Ian? Okay, John Laracy. Momo Sivovik. Lionel Salisbury's not here, and Gary Grieving. Okay, well, I will then nominate Eric Flodeen, followed by Christopher, Christopher Carroll for the two regular positions. And as the alternate position, I would like to nominate Lionel Salisbury.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? No. Okay. Eric and Christopher, we've got a busy year this year with the general plan and all of that, so thank you very much for your service, and we look forward to seeing you back here. Thank you. Okay, moving on, I do want to skip to the Traffic Commission, if possible. That would be two regular and one alternate position that's open. So we have Gregory Hoagland, who is reapplying, and then also Josephine Carroll. And then we have Paul Mendoza, who is applying, and then also Ian Clark. And so Gregory Hoagland. Josephine Carroll is on deck.
Mayor Jones, good evening, and members of the city council. I'll keep mine short as well. I've been serving on the Traffic Commission, and I'm respectfully requesting to be reappointed to the commission. I've enjoyed working with my fellow commissioners this past term. The staff is amazing. I enjoy working with your amazing staff. I think we've worked together to come up with some great solutions and responses to issues that have come before us, and I'd like to continue in that vein, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Josephine Carroll?
Good evening. My name is Josephine Carroll, and I have been an alternate for the last two years on the Traffic Commission, and I am humbly asking to be appointed as a regular. During the last two years, I have had several opportunities to sit on the panel and participate in the votes, and I am very thrilled every time I serve because I'm casting my vote that makes a big difference in what happens within our city. And I would love to continue to serve as a regular if I'm appointed for the next two, next term. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I did have a quick question for you, and, sorry. We really want you to try to show up to all of the meetings if possible, so, okay. Oh, okay, all right. Thank, thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification. Okay, so we have four applicants for two regular seats and one alternate seat. I did have a discussion with Ian Clark previously that he wanted to be an alternate. He didn't want the full-time seat because he thought that we might want to appoint the alter, the current alternate, which is you, Josephine. So I would like to nominate Gregory Hoagland and Josephine Carroll for the regular two seats, and then also Ian Clark as the alternate seat. And, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any noes? Okay. Then we can move forward to the San Marcos Community Foundation. We do have three regular positions, I'm sorry, four regular positions on this because we had one resignation today, and so... And that would be? That would be, oh, Taylor Thompson, my apologies. He resigned. Okay, I get it. So we have, we have a total of four positions. So I would say, since Ian Clark is going to be an alternate on the previous commission, I would like to nominate Paul Mendoza, and then we have, let's see, oh, now I'm lost. Let me look here.
Was that to the full-time position, Mayor?
They're, they're all full ti, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, they're all regular full-time, right? Yes, yeah, we don't have any alternates on that. So I would like to nominate Paul Mendoza, Momo Sivovik, Gary Grieving, and then Mike Hardesty to the Community Foundation. Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, and then I, we're moving on, and I think, I think we are going to be able to place everyone that has applied the Climate Action Plan Working Group. So the only person, and I believe, hold on one second here. Sorry, I've got like four different lists going here. Thank you, Phil, for making it so easy. I'm just kidding. Um, sorry. Let's see, we have four positions, is that right? Four regular positions and then one alternate, and I don't think I saw Kevin out there this evening. But Kevin is reapplying, which we definitely need someone that has some experience on there. Catherine McLean, you had applied for that as well, and then we also have
Jennifer, Jennifer Kirschbaum.
Is Jennifer here today? By the way, yes, okay, Jennifer, sorry. Did you want to come up and speak to us? And, and thank you for your, your being willing to serve on that, too, by the way. Sorry, and, and there was some confusion because you were on one of my lists and not the other list, and I was looking at the wrong list, and my apologies.
No problem.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time, but I've been serving on the Climate Action Plan Implementation Group for the last two years, and we had a huge milestone, as you know, last year in the city voting to join a community choice aggregate energy program. So after you voted to join Clean Energy Alliance, I was appointed to serve on the Clean Energy Alliance Community Advisory Committee. And that's been a great experience, and there's really a lot of overlap to the Climate Action Plan. So for example, we have a few subcommittees, and we're researching electric vehicle infrastructure grants that could possibly apply to the city of San Marcos. We're also looking at doing rooftop solar for low-income housing and for municipal areas. So I think that the, the work on the two committees really, really complements each other, each other. There's a lot of overlap. So I'd like to continue serving on this group for the next two years.
Okay, thank you very much. So we do have four positions, and we only had two applicants on this. I'm sorry, three applicants, yes. So we have Jennifer, Kevin, and then Catherine. And Jennifer, thanks again really for showing up this evening. And then we do have John Laracy, who I haven't spoken to him. He's not here this evening, I don't believe. I'm thinking, why don't we appoint him to that? Because I did look at his application, and there was some connection to planning. So my motion would be to nominate Kevin Norris, Catherine McLean, Jennifer Kirschbaum, and then John Laracy. Do I have a second?
A second.
And then let's all vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? No? Okay, we made it through, I think. So I don't, I don't believe we had any duplicates, right? Everyone's on one thing, so we don't, we're not asking too much. Thank you very much for everyone that did show up this evening, and thank you for your willingness to serve our city. I know it's definitely not an easy thing, showing up for meetings. You know, we, we all probably did something at some point in time. But anyway, we really appreciate you showing up, and again, if you're an alternate, please show up. We really do need you to be at the ready if possible because sometimes people don't show up at the last minute. You know, life happens, and we definitely appreciate that and understand that. So thank you again, and congratulations, everyone that's appointed or reappointed this evening.
And I think this is the first time
This is.
Everybody has
Everyone has a spot.
That's right.
No one walks away empty-handed. And then, there is one person that's voluntold this evening, so so hopefully they'll be okay with that, and that is John Laracy with the Climate Action Implementation Group. So anyway, thank you very much. And by the way, we will be hoping, Jennifer, that both you and Kevin can bring everyone up to speed on this, and I, and I'm glad to hear that you are on the community group for the community choice as well. So thanks for your service. Appreciate it. Yes, yes. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay, moving on, next up on our agenda is, let me find it here, oh, City Council Reorgan- Oh, City Council Reorganization. Okay, so that is us and what we will be serving on. So, we do have our current, and we did have a change in the council. And again, welcome, Councilmember Sinella. I know we're trying to get through this kind of quick this evening, but it's, I know it's a lot. I know it's a lot, but you, but you have, you're an expert. You were on the Valacitos before, so. Anyway, moving on, so we have North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority. We have a primary, an alternate, and we also, and that is the North, the North County Dispatch. Hold on just one second, let me find my other list. And so, I would like to nominate Maria Nunez as the primary and Ed Musgrove as the alternate. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any knows? No. And thank you, Helen, for clarifying that we don't have to walk out of the room, come back, all of that like we used to do in the old days because that is a lot of work and trying to remember how to do all that was a lot.
One positive that the FAPC has allowed the last 25 years, so yes.
Yes, we're very happy about that. League of California Cities, San Diego Division. I'd like to nominate Ed Musgrove as our primary, our first alternate as Mike Sinella, and our second alternate as Marina, Maria Nunez, Councilmember Nunez. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any knows? Okay. North County Transit District, I would like to have the primary as Deputy Mayor Jenkins, first alternate Ed Musgrove, and second alternate Maria Nunez. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any knows? No. San Diego Association of Governments, primary as myself, first alternate as Ed Musgrove, and second alternate as Sharon, yeah, Sharon Jenkins. All in favor? Second, sorry, second? See, but I got confused there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any knows? No. Southern California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, I'd like the primary to be Councilmember Sinella and the alternate will be the City Manager's Designee, which is generally HR. And do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any knows? Okay. And the Clean Energy Alliance, primary to be Councilmember Musgrove, alternate Councilmember Sinella. And motion to approve that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on at lightning speed, which never happens. Maybe your good luck for us, Councilmember Sinella.
Hope so.
I hope so too. So, next we have Oral Communications. Do we have any speakers? I did not see any. Okay, and then Reports. Sandeg, we did not meet in December.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
Did I miss something? Oh, oh my gosh.
These two.
Deputy Mayor.
These two.
Deputy Mayor, oh my goodness, how did I miss that? So, I would nominate current Deputy Mayor Sharon Jenkins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any second? No. And then, let's see, appoint the mayor and the deputy mayors, the San Marcos Fire Protection District and all other agencies where the City Council sits on the board. So, that would be myself and then Deputy Mayor Jenkins. And so, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I did miss that, almost. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I need you definitely at my side, helping me stay on track here. I was just very excited to move on. I was thinking we were moving along so quickly. Okay, no oral communications still, reports, no Sandeg meetings in December. League of California Cities, Councilmember Nunez, did we have any meetings in December?
No meetings, we're dark this month. We are, we were scheduled to have our committee orientation last Thursday. It got canceled because of the flooding that's happening in parts of the state. So, it's been rescheduled to this Thursday. But I'm thinking maybe it'll get canceled again.
Well, this Thursday, they moved it to a Zoom meeting, so we'll be able to log in Thursday.
Are you going, Councilmember?
I will be Zooming in.
Now that you're newly appointed, okay, perfect. All right, okay, so then we're covered on that.
Yes, I do want to announce that the next division meeting is February the 13th, 11:30 to 1:30. It is in person at the Four Point Sheraton Hotel.
Okay.
So, I haven't seen an agenda yet, but...
I don't think Cat has sent it out yet.
Right.
Probably after, probably after Thursday, I would assume. Okay, all right, great. And then, North County Transit, Deputy Mayor.
So, we haven't met this month, but we did have a meeting December 15th, which was after our last council meeting. So, I do have an update from then, although it seems like a long time ago. So, several highlights, we recognize two employees that had 30 years of service to North County Transit. They were both Breeze operators. It was Ernest Wing and Kelvin Hutchins. They were both hired in 1992. And then, we had discussion about our bus operator shortage and had some updates on that. As of November, we had 35 unfilled bus operator positions, which was down from 53 in July of '22. And currently, there are 22 possible employees that are in training. But what happens is, for whatever reason, sometimes they don't make it through the training or change their mind. So, it's not a guarantee that there'll be 22 employees come out of the current training and...
Sorry, that was 22 out of 35 positions that you currently have available?
So, there's 30, in November, there were 35 unfilled.
Right.
Okay? Which was down from 53. And we currently have 22 in training, but maybe not all 22 will make it into the driver's seat.
And these are going to be NCTD employees as opposed to contract drivers?
Eventually, not yet. Yes, we're working on transitioning our, some of the employees from MV Transportation back to NCTD. So, that's in the process.
So, for the folks out at home, they would go to northcountytransit.com?
Go NCTD.com.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Because they are definitely still hiring?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes. And then, speaking of that, we will be resuming the bus operations, direct bus operations. It was outsourced back in 2010. And it's been proven that it's, it's worthwhile to bring it back as a North County Transit employees. And so, that transition is in process. And the next item is, oh, this was quite interesting. We had a Caltrans North County Corridor Plan Update. And I did not bring the information we received. But anyway, we had Caltrans there, Sandeg, and we talked about the long-term plans for the corridor. And so, that's a work in progress. Obviously, there are not enough funds to do everything. But the interesting thing, the takeaway for me, is the Caltrans person, and it was Alan, Jack, made a comment, we were talking about signalization and all of that. And he made a comment that there are some pilots going on with synchronizing some of the signals. And there's a pilot, I believe it's in Carlsbad and on the 76, I think. Anyway, so, I asked, or mentioned that maybe, you know, our staff could get together with them because I didn't promise. But I said that we might be interested if they wanted to pilot something here to time our signals with their signals. We might, I didn't promise, we might be willing to do that for them. So, so, I'll share that information with Jack. So, that was a very...
I see Jack down there smiling.
I was just going to say, maybe for the public's benefit, the traffic signals at the ends of the ramps are not controlled by the city, they're controlled by Caltrans.
Caltrans.
That's what the conversations are.
Yeah, and, and some of our issues are because of how they control the signals. So, he says they have signals that are, they're piloting, more up-to-date with technology than what they had. So, so, I was very excited about that.
Well, being that our city is bisected by the 78, I think it's definitely something that affects us on a pretty regular basis.
Right.
So, that's great news.
So, and then we have our next meeting on, next week.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. And the next thing is North County Dispatch, which there, I don't believe there was a meeting. And Councilmember Nunez, we will get you all the information so that you know what that schedule is going to look like. Clean Energy Alliance report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We met just before Christmas and it was primarily to discuss the audit. The independent auditor looked at our financials and we got a clean bill of health and we still are showing a $2 million surplus. Our next board meeting is the 26th of this month. And I believe the Governor's Declaration for Emergency with respect to COVID ends either January or February, anticipating that we'll be handling, conducting our board meetings here. So, I'll put that out the next council meeting. So, those who might be interested to attend the meetings, they'll be right here in this chamber. And one of the other things that we have in the news, which is going to be no great surprise to anyone here, SEG&E reported their natural gas bills are probably going to double this month. So, here we are.
Minority is a lot right now, after I just received it. Okay, City Council Business Visits.
I have one question about the Clean Energy Alliance, Jack. So, if meetings are going to be here, if we want to just come and be an observer, can we do that? As long as there's not three of us here? Or does it matter if we're just sitting in the audience? What are your thoughts?
I think that's a Helen question.
Helen question?
You can meet, you can attend the meeting of another organization. I would hesitate in terms of input to that organization.
Okay.
So, I would be very cautious about that, but you can attend as a member of the public. You are part of the service area.
Okay.
So, you don't give up all your First Amendment rights and Fourth Amendment rights, but some of them, so, just some.
Real quickly, Mayor, Jennifer, I think by extension, meetings that you might have, you're in Zoom currently? Yeah, so yours will probably transition and I'm not sure if it's been set up to meet here or where, but I can... Okay, well, everyone is invited to attend, thank you.
Okay, City Council Business Visits.
Yes, Maria and I went to Neighborhood Services, which opened in October, I believe. They're over by, on Montiel, by Kohl's Carpet, Turner's. Van Diego, yeah.
Sorry, Neighborhood Healthcare. I'm sorry, I thought you said something else.
Neighborhood, oh, okay, healthcare, yes, yes.
Okay.
They've been in Escondido, they started in Escondido and opened in 1969. I had no idea. And they love their location, they're right on the good freeway access, good access between Escondido and San Marcos. They have a very large facility. I think some of you might have visited there actually before we did. They have a total of over 1,100 employees, probably about 100,000 cumulative patients. And they have 24 locations in San Diego and Riverside Counties. They see, provider will see about 20 patients a day. And they are federally designated as a healthcare provider. And they see everybody regardless of if they can pay. They can pay whatever they're able to or they do not have to pay if they can't. They work closely with Palomar Health. The maternity patients do go to Palomar. And they work with Palomar for other hospitalization needs. Do you want to share what else you know? You probably know more than most of us.
Well, I, I'm so happy and I'm so excited that they're finally physically in San Marcos. I think it was really long overdue and, like you, I didn't know they existed before COVID. And now, when I drive around in Escondido, I realize that they have a location in every corner. But they just hadn't paid attention. So, they are very prominent in Escondido and this is their first physical location in San Marcos. So, they did tell us that they're working on increasing the patients that they see at this location. But it's a beautiful location and I think it's going to serve our community or residents well. I was introduced to Neighborhood with the work that I've been doing with COVID vaccine accessibility and they just exceeded every expectation. They really do great work and I've been mostly impressed by the way their staff just responds so quickly, especially in the emergencies. And you might remember Sharon, Dr. Patel telling us that they really think that COVID helped them to, to really assess what they were doing and they're growing so much. And they attribute a lot of that growth to the response to COVID. So, I think they'll be a great resource to our residents. A couple of the other, the mayor, but we were there for the ribbon cutting that they had at the facility. And I think at any point, the rest of the council should go back and look at the facility. I think they'll be a great addition.
A couple other, a couple other things worth mentioning is, and this is the typical state in their infinite wisdom, I asked why they were only open Monday to Friday and had specific hours, not on weekends, maybe be more accessible to people or in the evenings. And they said, actually, there's a state mandate that limits strict 40-hour limitation for these type of clinics. And so, that's why they're only open during those hours. The other thing that was interesting is Dr. Patel, we think, is the only, I think he's the CEO.
He's the CEO.
He actually also sees patients. And so, he, it's more physicals, primary care, but it keeps him connected to what's going on. And so, I think that gives him a lot of knowledge of what they need. So, it was a great visit there.
It was a great visit.
Yeah, they're looking for partnerships and so Tess is going to make some connections for them. And they're excited to be here.
Another addition to us becoming the healthcare hub of North County, which, you know, we're centrally located, so it really makes a lot of sense. And I, I did, you know, I did go to the ribbon cutting and I thought they do a great job. They, they are very comprehensive too, which I really liked. And, you know, the fact that the CEO is, you know, boots-on-the-ground kind of thing, it really does lend a lot to their credibility too on top of it. So, I really was impressed by them as well. So, thanks, what a fun visit. And then, moving on to our Creek District update, a lot is going on over there. Jack?
Is there Creek, a river right now?
It's, it's a bit soggy out there, but we're happy to report that the creek stayed in the creek.
And no cars can go in it right now.
That's, Bent Avenue was blissfully not infected by all the rain for the first time ever. Well, not ever, but, so, yeah, there is a lot of things going on, mostly walls being constructed along Discovery. That's key to getting the second side of Discovery up to the finished elevation as well as getting the sound wall in, in front of the Mobile Home Park. The last phase of utilities will be getting started soon. There's a whole raft of utility, final utility relocations. We're still working on installing the park trail. We're still working on installing the park trail. And then I think the big thing that everybody sort of sees when they go by is the, the bridge. So we're getting the deck itself formed up, all the reinforcement going in, and we'll have that deck pore done here fairly soon. So that really will make it feel like the project's getting close to finish when the, the bridge deck goes in. And, you know, it's, especially with the weather, we're continuing to meet, particularly with the mobile home community, to address their issues. They've obviously, it's a, it's a difficult situation for the residents on that side of the road while we're doing all this to try and make sure we can keep getting them in and out of there as best we can while they're exiting out through a pretty significant construction zone. But the project fared very well through all the rain, and so that's good news.
Great question. So obviously, we can't see it. So obviously, there's, there's open space underneath the Veracruz
Yes.
area, so the water is flowing, it's not being dammed up anywhere.
That's correct.
It's flowing like it should.
It's flowing like it should, that's right.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to council commentary, then. I do have a couple of things. One is today, I, well, last week I went on, the Edco has a new app, and I requested that they bring me a smaller gray bin and a larger green bin, because I've been doing a lot of organic, I do a lot of cooking. So my organics were overflowing, and I literally had barely anything in my gray trash can. So I sent them a little request on the app, it was very easy, and that was last Monday. They said, okay, leave your trash cans out and extra, you know, like the whole day on your next trash day, which was this week, which was today. I went out there, and lo and behold, I had a small gray one and a big green one. So it's very easy to do for all the folks at home and also in the audience today. It's very easy to recycle all your organics. We really need to get everyone to help do their part in this, because it does help us reach our goals statewide. Very easy to do. I go to the grocery store, I always get brown paper bags. And then as I'm cooking, throughout the time I'm cooking, I throw everything in there. If it gets soggy, I get then a paper plate, and I stick it underneath there so that it doesn't, you know, make my bag fall apart. Carry it out to my recycling and pop it in there, and it's really easy to do. You can put literally everything that is paper-ish, all of your dirty paper plates and that sort of thing, napkins, all of that, anything that's paper, that's dirty, you know, with food, can go in there. So it's really easy to do, you can put a lot of stuff in there. And you'll find that really you don't need a lot of gray trash can space, which is great. And then one other thing that I wanted to mention is safety is always your, our highest priority here in San Marcos. And I know there are some folks that are concerned about some things that have been happening. Ongoing investigations, we cannot discuss, because we want to make sure that we preserve the preservation of the actual investigation. So you won't be hearing a lot from us, but our Sheriff's Department is working very hard, as always, to keep our community safe, and it's always going to be one of our top priorities, and they do an excellent job at that. Yesterday was law enforcement day where we were talking about and honoring our sheriffs. And I know we have two of them here this evening, and we sure appreciate all you do. But just wanted to mention again that safety is always going to be one of our top priorities. And then, any other council members have anything to say? I'm sorry? Oh, and our captain, yes, he is here. I actually, I, I was looking for you, and I was like, I don't see you, because you had your head done and you weren't looking at me. So anyway, thank you for all you do. We certainly are very appreciative of all of your service here in our community. And, and you were captain, Councilmember Musgrove retired. But any other comments from the council?
Just a question from our, our last meeting. At, at the last meeting, the council approved the contract with Vallesitos Water District pertaining to South, South Lake. I don't recall, though, and I might have just missed it, this is my first meeting and all the excitement, but do we have a timeline or an estimate as to when that might actually open?
We're, we're working on, we've got, most of the materials have actually been delivered, signage and all that sort of stuff, so we're putting the installation part of that together. We're hoping for some time in February, but we don't have a date certain yet.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, that's even sooner than I think. Wait, we always ask this question, you don't know to ask, is that of 2023?
It is.
Okay. We always do that, it's kind of a joke that we have going on. And it generally is this year, however, we'd like to just bring attention to it, just have a little bit of fun. Anyway, any other council commentary? If not, Happy New Year to everyone, and thank you for coming this evening and being engaged in our community. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.